Daryl, am I okay back there? You got it? Want to go ahead and start our agenda review? With the review of the agenda. I don't think there are any changes. We did add another. Another presentation. We've got three presentations today. Arbor Day proclamation. The Graystone Fiber update, and then also. The Chat Hill CDB is doing a branding presentation. Then we will have our staff reports. We have a couple of items of unfinished business. The first one. Is the Merrill Village request, and I think most of us know it is being deferred to next month. The development agreement. Finally gotten signed off yesterday by Rick and. The the final draft of that is going off, not that we were waiting for Rick specifically. It's just that was the last step in the process, not a delay. But that'll be heading out to the developer tomorrow, and our guess is that there probably is some conversation. About that still between now and next month, there's also a couple of changes to conditions and a couple of additional conditions that we'll be talking about. I've talked to somebody about some of those. I'll talk to the rest of you within the next week or so about. About those and. Again, that should be on the agenda next month, so we'll just be deferring it for that one month this time. Next item is the charter change on the. The commissions, and again, that's in the. Couple of commissions where it's not specified otherwise in the. Charter. Our practice has been that the. Council is allowed to pick people, for example, Mary Beth Wonsley, when she lived just outside of the city, was on the Parks Commission. There was a move last year to change that. There were some advertising problems with that ordinance when it came through, so we had to re-advertise and redo it. Different council now. We talked about this last month. I think the general perspective is that it's okay for the council to have. The right to pick whoever they want on those commissions if they feel like there's some. Benefit to have somebody that looks just outside of the city or whatever, and if they don't, then they don't have to do it. There's no reason to change the charter. So I'm asking that people vote no on that one. Any discussion about that? We talked about it last time. If there's anything else to add.
If you want the city to have that. The council to have that right. We still need to amend the charter. If you remember, there's a conflict between the charter and the ordinances, and we can revise this back to one of the options that I gave to the council. And so we would just need to change it that. Any. Anybody, any member of a commission. That's not the planning commission. Can be whoever the council wants to select. The planning commission members must be residents of the city.
Right. And that's a state requirement?
Correct.
So we will do that that way. We will ask for an amendment, and Rick will tell us exactly what that amendment says.
I'll have it ready.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that flexibility.
I mean, again, the the answer always was you didn't have to do it. It was just an opportunity if the majority of the council wanted to do it. We do have a particular example right now who who said, I'm gonna help regardless, so it's not for her. But Sarah Love on the Historic Commission, who is a. You know, PhD historian who. Has a mom who lives here that she spends a lot of time with and plans on moving back here when she's. Done with the current job that she has, all of that anyway, is on our historic commission, and. I would like to keep her on there. The next thing is twenty four dash oh oh six, which is a first read on a. Country in and the RL district. We've heard some of this one before. Mike, you want to talk to us about it?
I'll actually do it if that's okay.
Sorry, Kate.
Yes, so the applicant Justin Robinson has applied for a special use permit for twenty eight point seven acres at eighty seven thirty five Walkerson Mill Road. Proposals to allow country into the RL district. The subject property is located on the north side of the Walkerson Mill Road, just west of Petersburg Road and a little west of the city of Palmetto. The property is mostly wooded with a U-shaped pond to the rear of the property. The surrounding property is also mostly wooded with some single-family homes to the west, south, and east of the subject parcel. The proposed special use permit would allow Mr. Robinson. To use the property to operate a country end. The space would include four four-unit cabins, a three thousand square foot kitchen, a seven thousand square foot dining venue, a small outdoor seating area, and a garden. Each of the sixteen cabin units will be eight hundred square feet. In addition to hosting guests to the country, and the applicant intends to host weddings in his indoor dining venue. The kitchen and dining venue will be except for uses to the country and will be used for guests of the estate.
So this will be going to Planning Commission for their review later this month. The applicant is here. If anybody has any questions for the applicant. Anybody has any questions for our planning department? Again, it's just a first read, so we're not acting on it today, but it's getting it on the record.
I have a question. So the, to clarify, so it's the sixteen units? Is that right?
Yes.
And they're eight hundred square? Tell me about how. Was that a change?
From the original submission, yes, so each cabin will be eight hundred square feet. There's gonna be sixteen cabins, but they're gonna be clustered into four. Clusters of cabins, so sixteen in total. But they're gonna be. If you need.
So they're a little smaller than the original plan.
Much smaller, about half the size.
Okay. So Katie, the event center, you said seven thousand square footed? Was it seven thousand?
It is a seven thousand square foot dining venue, which from my understanding, the applicant wants to have private dining events. He, that's part of what he does now because he's a chef. He he wants to host dining experiences.
What about weddings and stuff like that? Is there a limit or how many people? Could come and like time or something like that? So there's no limitation or special conditions for that?
We plan on conditioning that. We are proposing conditions to limit the number of people and. And times that he could have those and dates that he could have those weddings, but he intends on only hosting weddings and dining experiences. No loud parties or anything like that. Just he intends on doing weddings. That's from what he has told us.
Right, but that could also be like. Traffic. Have y'all looked at traffic? Because. When you look at. Wickus Mill, I mean Wickus Mill Road and Hollywood Fifty Four. Like that property is about a mile away. And depending on the time. Of some of these events and stuff like that could cause a traffic problem, especially when you got the art farm across the street, and then there are. Some other buildings that's gonna be coming in the city of Palmetto on the other side. So did anyone look at traffic or anything, or that doesn't matter to the city or?
So for something this small, traffic study is not required from my understanding, but. We we could definitely look.
I'm just thinking about the welfare of the people. That's in the area because once all this stuff bill out, it's going to be. Traffic, and if you build it, people are gonna come, and when you think about, you talk about the citizen because that is mostly a senior citizen area, so I'm just thinking about that.
We'll understand.
I would imagine too that when we get it next for action, it'll have whatever conditions you guys are proposing attached, whatever the. Planning Commission comes up with as well, right?
Yes, sir.
Generally speaking, when somebody tells us they're only gonna do this, they're only gonna do that. That is. A part of the conditions then too that we hold them to that.
That's correct.
Does the seven thousand square feet automatically have some sort of number limit on size of a an event?
Fire marshal size.
Fire marshal. Yeah, that would be a fire marshal.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that would give us that sort of a starting point. Right, we need to kind of if we can know what that that capacity would be.
I'll follow up with I'll follow up with Matt about that.
And this is rural, right? We're not asking for a rezone.
That's correct.
So the buffers required is.
There shouldn't be any buffer requirements from this, but they do show at least a hundred twenty foot buffers around the majority of the property.
And that's a that'll be a condition?
We we can make it a condition. We can propose that.
There was also conversation about. Like needing to have some planted buffer around the driveways, things like that. The last conversation we had about it again, I would assume that that kind of thing would be showing up in the conditions.
Absolutely.
I mean, it sounds like at that town hall, that was a big concern from the neighbors driveway.
That's correct.
I also noticed, so the drive was changed. It appears that it was moved from the original location to on the.
It was current.
On the the new concept plan.
Yes, so. The current drive will be is proposed to just be an emergency exit for emergency vehicles. And they decided to move to the other little flag area to be a little more accommodating to the the individual who lives. In the middle there. To kind of get that drive away from from her house. It's a little more towards the undeveloped partial.
That also appears to be. Buffered by some more trees on that side.
That's correct.
Anything else? Again, we'll we'll have opportunity to dig in this more deeply once we see what the conditions are and all that. Next up is twenty four dash oh oh seven, which is a rezoning of sixteen hundred and six acres. Mike, do you want to? Talk to us about that?
Sure. This one's, I think, pretty simple. This is the movie studio that was approved last year. The applicant was not able to close the sale of the property. The five special use permits that were approved have expired because of the way the conditions were written. And so what remains is the zoning and three variances. The property owner, original property owner, people who've owned the property the whole time, requested that the city revert the zoning back to RL. And at the same time, the ordinance is written to eliminate those variances that were also approved for the property. So if the ordinance is approved, everything will go back to just how it was before we started talking about a studio out there.
So this is. I mean, the the key here is that for them to maintain the zoning might have tax implications, I would think that they are probably wanting to avoid, so. And I don't see any negative to. Switching it back to ours. Maybe we have any questions about that? All right, next one is the. Eight percent. Thing that we can do now on the hotel motel tax because of the CDB. Robbie, is that you or is that Dana just talking about that one?
I can be right for myself.
Whoever wants to, whoever, Rick has a microphone, so.
This is just so we can move the or increase the hotel motel tax from seven percent to eight percent. So this is a resolution requesting that our General Assembly representatives. Tender this or present this for a local act. Adoption at the General Assembly. And my book, I have two copies of the resolution. I don't have the copy of the actual. The actual bill that would be presented, but there's there's that that part I'll take care of as long as the council will support this.
Hey, and again, this is something that is paid entirely by people that are from outside of the city, visiting the city, that then gets used on things that support. It's a fairly narrow list of things that you can do that they support basically. External facing activity. Any questions about that? I mean. It's gonna be a short work session, maybe. Next one is. The. Twenty four dash oh nine, which is a replacement on the charter. That's the mayor pro temp, and that is basically realigning our mayor pro temp thing with our council. Cycle.
Right, this is what you requested me to do the last meeting, and so again, it's a resolution requesting that our. Representatives at the General Assembly will adopt a local act. And what it sends the it it now would limit the mayor pro temp to two-year term, so every time that there's an election right after January. Then the council would vote on who would be the mayor pro temp.
Any questions about that? Again, we've talked about all these before, so. The next one is twenty four dash oh one oh, which is a resolution appointing board members to the CDB. Because that CDB was just stood up a couple of months ago, we talked in the last meeting about just carrying forward with the current list. And that's what's in, that's what's in here.
There's actually some revised resolution.
That includes all the current members, basically. I guess there was a question about one continuing, but that was confirmed. Any questions about that? If not, twenty four dash oh one, which is a budget update, and I can tell that Robbie's gonna talk to us about that right now.
It's good. It is good. Hey. Good evening, Mayor Council. This is a annual budget amendments. I mean, we can do these, you know, mid-year or quarterly or at the end of the year, but. Auditors like to see us do budget amendments to, you know, adjust the budget up or down depending on where we're at, so. What I'm doing, because we have new technology, new financial software now, so we're kind of just dipping our feet in the water. We're not trying to get. Too crazy with this, so I went through and looked at where we were, low hanging fruit, if you will, the revenues that came in. Higher, like fixed revenues that came in higher than what we budgeted for. Easy example is an search premium tax. You know, we we budgeted two fifty five, it came in at two sixty one. We have no idea that it's gonna come in two sixty one. We we budget close as we can, so. Property taxes, we budget what we budget, and then, you know, we don't know who's gonna appeal, what we're gonna have, so we collect those, and so that's an increase, so. All the revenues that you see are just increased to those areas that were. That were fixed, doesn't mean that we're we're gonna stop collecting revenues in other areas. There's gonna be other areas we're going to see. Go up before the end of the year. You'll see like interest is, we budgeted thirty thousand, but you know, we've got forty nine thousand already in interest, you know. You don't know what those rates are gonna be in a flex weight, so. We end up with about six hundred and sixty two thousand dollars in additional revenues that more so than we budgeted. And then we. Just apply what I do is to go down instead of expenditures. Sure, we have some departments in there that might be a little bit over fifty eight percent because we're fifty eight percent to the fiscal year. But we're not gonna touch those right now. We're just gonna apply those revenues and identify them as just additional fund balance. And and keep it in there because, you know, we keep those the fund balance in there for emergencies and contingencies and also for for the roads and such, so. That's really all we're doing with budget amendments this time. We're trying to keep it simple until we. Get to the end of the year, and we'll do some more detailed budget amendments.
And and the bulk of the extra revenues are just going to the reserve?
Yes.
As they should.
It's going straight when I put them anywhere else, just that's just gonna be reserves.
We might, we might talk about maybe expanding the paving budget a little bit based on that, but. We'll talk about that. Anybody have any questions about? That whole. Process? All right. Next up is twenty four dash oh one oh, which is a grant on body worn cameras. Chris?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councils. This is a grant through the Department of Justice's Bureau of Justice Assistance. And it's a fifty fifty grand opportunity to purchase new body worn. Cameras for our law enforcement officers. Their current equipment is about nine years old, and. The company that we're currently servicing through, actually, the contract ends next year anyways, this is a good opportunity to. Purchase new equipment with the. Accompanying services, software, and warranties, which carries for the next five years. And they lower the price at fifty percent off, so. It's a. Great opportunity that we look forward to investing in our law enforcement.
What was the last contract?
Let me let the chief speak to that.
The last contract was signed in twenty, it would've been twenty nineteen, so it or twenty twenty, so it ends in twenty twenty five. So next year, we would have to purchase all brand new, well, we'd have to do a new contract. Which the the contract is mainly for the licensing and the software usage, not necessarily for the individual. Equipment itself.
Right, yeah, I decided I went through the breakdown and was just trying to get my head around.
Yeah.
What's involved in this kind of equipment?
Most of, most of the the cost, about ninety percent of the cost is the licensing and the software.
Do you remember what that last contract was? How much it was?
For the five-year period, I want to say it was about seventy seventy two thousand dollars.
I was just curious about it. The breakdown on on. What the equipment is and what we do, contract to contract.
We pay currently about fourteen thousand dollars a year is what we're paying. On the body cams.
Anybody else? All right, and then the next thing is. Surplusing one of the explorers?
Correct. This is the the actually the explorer that we got when I first started here. Almost nine years ago, so it's at two hundred and fifty thousand miles and. It has reached its serviceable life. So it's it's time to time to go.
Yep. Any any questions about that? We had a, so we are on a a kind of regular schedule of replacements, one and then. One year and two in the other years of police cars, and that has gotten us in better shape than we were before we started doing that, but as we've expanded the size of the department. They're getting older because it's not really enough to keep up with the the size of the department we have now.
That is correct.
We had a really interesting call a couple of days ago, and we'll probably have an interesting proposal on next month's agenda.
I believe so, yes.
To to number one. As we get rid of the current equipment, we'll get a lump of money here shortly, and then we'll have a process by which we will have newer equipment more frequently for about the same money, so. Beneficial process that we're looking at moving to. Thanks.
Thank you.
And then the next thing, the last thing is the meeting schedule, which is the subject of. Confusion today and and probably ever more, but it. Currently, we are doing. Four P M. Work sessions and six thirty meetings. And that leaves a gap in between that makes it. It's like too much time, given how long these things actually take. We talked last month about changing the work session to four thirty, which makes it a little later, a little easier for people to get to after work or whatever. And then changing the council meeting to six so that the space between isn't. So long and and wasteful of time. And that's that's what we talked about last month, so that's what's on here. Think it'll help. Yeah, it it makes sense to me as well, and and. Of course, you know, I I said this last time, if there's a meeting where we know that we have a ton of stuff on a work session, maybe need extra time, we'll just schedule the extra time for the work session. I think the council meetings even stick at six and and that just works. And that is it for the agenda review. And then. There's a couple of other. Items, ATVs, UTVs, and golf carts. Camille has brought that up, and Camille, you want to lead us into that conversation?
Right, so I brought that up because of the new state law and just the confusion around that with. The owners of off-highway vehicles, something about they're now legally able to drive on county roads, and then I just had the question, is it city roads? What are UTV? You know, all the differences in these in these titles of these different vehicles now that are like sitting at Home Depot for on your way out, you can purchase. So that is it, but basically it's like what's legal? And to make sure there's no confusion, and do we need to look at something to? For what? I mean, I know right now, like agricultural, and of course, our vehicle can travel on the roads with permits or whatnot.
I mean, for color, right? So we've got in Saranby, for example, in the developments, you have a lot of people that use golf carts just for running back and forth, so there's a huge golf cart. Base in, for example, Saranby, which will probably happen in other hamlets or villages. And Saranby has some rules that don't have force of law about how old people have to be to drive and all of that. Again, there's some state rules around some of that stuff. And you also are starting to get this condition with like where the art farm is, where people are driving on public roads to get to something else that's attached to the hamlet. So that's a thing, and then to your point, right, we also have. In the rural parts of town, people, you know, taking ATVs to go from farm to farm or whatever, and we obviously don't want to get in the way of that. So we talked to to Rick about, you know, there are obviously municipalities around, some of which he's actually the city attorney for. That have was that have a lot of thought put into that.
Petri City is grandfathered in because it obviously was the very first community, I think, in Georgia really to have any meaningful number of golf carts, so. Is excluded from the state law, is whatever the ordinances are in Petri City, they control. But everywhere else has to follow the the state laws. We have to adopt those, if I remember correctly, that that's permitted, and there are certain restrictions and. How, what's the speed limit on the roads that can be used, twenty five miles per hour? The the age of the drivers, and then there's some other requirements, markings, and whatever else. Farm vehicles are always allowed. The chief.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that is. That's correct. There there is the only thing that really changed with the on December first was that those vehicles that are gonna be primarily driven. On city streets had to be. If you, for lack of better terms, tagged. There's a form that the Department of Motor Vehicles came out with, the tag office that they fill out. And they submit it to them, and it then becomes tagged, but it vehicle has the. The PTV is the is it's referred in state law, has to have working lights, it has to have seat belts, it has to have, you know, certain things.
Which is different from a golf cart. I mean, there there is this category vehicle.
It's basically, yeah.
High-speed golf cart, basically, right?
Fifty cc's.
Yeah.
Or 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 above, it has to be tagged. Under fifty cc's, it doesn't. And again, electric, it doesn't have to be tagged.
Oh, at all.
At all, correct, because again, electric golf carts, for the most part, aren't gonna aren't gonna be doing, you know, eighty miles an hour anywhere. So.
You hope.
I want I want that one. Right. But the 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 main thing for for Chattahoochee Hills, I think, is. You know, Saranby's private property, so if Saranby wants to allow golf carts in there, I mean, it's it's private property, it's roads. My officers are not going to be out there looking for everyone that has a side-by-side going to their hunt their family hunting grounds, and they cross over Rico Road. They're not gonna be, hey, stop. You know, however, if you are driving your ATV down Rico or South Fulton. At eighty ninety miles an hour because it's gas operated, then you're gonna meet one of my officers. You know, just like you would if you were driving a car. So I, you know, I I understand your concerns with it. I I.
Yeah, it's hard to kind of be clear about it really, right? Because.
There there is one issue, though, and this is something that when we were looking at the fire lanes in Saranby with the the chief, right? And we worked with Saranby to get those all marked appropriately so that the fire trucks can get wherever they need to go. We also noticed that a lot of the golf carts were parking in a way where the back little footrest thing is sticking out into the lane of travel, right? And Saranby put something out recently that that asked people to turn them around so that that was over either the margin of the road or over the sidewalk or whatever. Keeping the vehicle from sticking out into the road. That has no force of law, right?
Correct.
And and that is an issue because if you have sometimes two of those across from each other, you're suddenly down to the lane that doesn't support traffic going back and forth.
Correct.
And and I'm wondering if. We maybe want to add something that would be about that, right? Like in places where roads are of a certain character, which is only happening in villages or hamlets. We have some enforceability around the things that make those streets safe.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
With these types of vehicles.
With these type of vehicles, I I would ask Rick, though, even though it's something like. Is that enforceable even as a city ordinance on private property?
Public safety issues, my understanding are.
Yeah, because you can't get through on driving by them. Yeah, we can do it as a public safety issue, but we'd have to have some kind of hook like that to. Been able to get an ordinance and make it enforceable.
It's like we've had this conversation before, right? You can't enforce speed limits, but you can afford reckless driving.
Correct.
Or or DUI.
DUI, yeah.
So this is one of those, my understanding, one of those kind of issues. Let's let's take a look at. Some language that might.
And what we also can do. I'll talk to the chief. Let me review the state law and see if there's some other parts of the state law that we want to incorporate into local ordinance, you know, but I'll go over those with you, chief.
Yeah.
Beforehand and hope to have that before the council at the next meeting. Beforehand and hope to have that before the council at the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Great.
Is there any way to temper that language in such a way though, that it protects the, the vast numbers of. Local people using those vehicles to travel on the roads to, you know. Friends and relations farms to their land to tend their animals. I mean, I know multiple. Two people who farm on multiple fields.
Absolutely. And, and like I said before, I.
Some of that's not legal now, but again, the, the enforcement paradigm here.
Right, and, and my, I would say this, and I'm, I'm hesitant to say it, but it's, it's, it's true. I mean, my officers use their discretion and. Most of, almost all of my officers are. Committed to this community and they understand that this is a rural community and someone going down the road, especially during hunting season to their family hunting. They're just gonna wave and keep going as long as they're not, again, driving in the middle of the road, doing a hundred miles an hour. You know, being, being unsafe or something. If they're traveling at like five miles an hour on the side of the road, they're gonna wave and keep going. You know, I, I understand where you're in, in your right, you know, there should be some type of language to protect it, but in reality. I don't really see my officers enforcing that.
Well, and the problem is too, we can't put language in place that counterbeings a state law.
No, it ha- it has to fit with the state law. We, uh, state law trumps us.
So again, enforcement paradigm then.
The, but let me look at the, uh, the state law on that and, and Scott, I'll do that as well. Full appreciation of, of really the, the differences here between the rural area and Saranby. Where we got maybe some life safety issues there with parking, maybe a couple of other things.
Sure.
But then we need to have some realism in, in the, in the rural areas of Chattahoochee Hills as well.
I know a lot of times, you know, in, like the state law. I think here required farm equipment, right? Like you can dig farm equipment on the road, you get that the triangle and all of that.
Correct.
And even then, it's about portion paradigm, because you don't see much of that on tractors here either, and we don't do anything about it, or anything.
Well, actually, I, I've seen quite a few tractors with the triangles on.
Have you? Yeah, okay. I, I know one in particular that doesn't, that's just the one I have always run.
And I thought with farming, it fell under D N R sort of a situation, is that not?
But statistically, farming equipment is allowed on, um. On the streets of the state, but by, by, um, by state law, right?
But to Scott's point, I mean, we wanna make sure that we're not restricting.
Right.
It's common sense kind of thing.
Yeah.
So is there a requirement for insurance on the ones that we?
No, uh, not at, well, what I'm familiar with there is not, but, um. Homeowners insurance may or may not cover, but you can buy a very inexpensive policy. And because I live in Peachtree City, the number one reason why they have life lights in Peachtree City, golf cart accidents.
Yes.
They have multi-use paths, you know, we're talking about just open what road.
As, as a runner, I know about the multi-use path and those, those golf carts coming behind you, so it can be rather scary.
Specifically to what you had asked, forty, forty dash six dash three thirty point one lists what? What they have to have, they have to have a braking system or reverse warning device, a main power switch, headlamps. Reflex, reflectors, tail lamps, a horn, rearview mirror, safety warning labels and hip restraints.
To, to go on the road.
Correct.
Interesting. Well, good to know. I mean, so we need to, whatever we're gonna do from a safety perspective, we need to do in the developments, right? And then state law, we can't countervene, right? For, for golf carts.
Just, uh, sorry to take time with this, but like.
That's all.
Uh, hip restraints and so on, how does that cover? And half the guys hunting are just on a four-wheeler. Is that?
On private property?
Well, no, you mean like, no, this is, this is.
This is to drive it on, on city.
Right, but they go point to point.
You can't do that with a.
Well, so.
It's not, it's never been legal. No, it's just whether or not.
This is like, again, this is to drive them on the streets. If they're not driven on the street, then they don't have to comply with this. So that could be if they're driving it on the, on the right away, that's not the street. So the four-wheelers and stuff, four-wheeler, you shouldn't drive a four-wheeler on a street anyway, because the tires aren't made for it, you're gonna ruin your tires. You know, you should be down in the off-road. But this is specifically.
Going to the farm, you know, going from the property to the hunting spot. People.
No, I understand.
No, when you see, well, you see the tracks a lot of times in the right away, where they're, they're possibly being. Grass, grass, grass art. But, but you see him on, on the road too. Again, I've never heard anybody complain that they've gotten a ticket. I've never, because I don't think we've ever given anybody.
I don't think we have either.
And I don't think that's changing.
No.
But I do think that there's an issue that needs to be addressed there, and then we just need to make sure that we're compliant with state law in our codes. We're not trying to countermand some state law that we can't. Anything else around that subject? All right, the next one, this is just an issue that has come up, uh, uh, several times. Uh, we had a, a. Uh, event about a year ago where, uh, a citizen was upset with something that. Uh, he claimed happened with the city manager. We addressed that at the time in. A, um, executive session and came out of that was the conversation with the city manager about his comportment when talking to people that are. Uh, anyway, just talking to folks and that was the end of that. City council didn't wanna go further with that. Issue keeps coming up. Uh, I just wanna confirm that there's no feeling on the new council that we need to go any further with that. For that individual, one, and two. Uh, I've talked with Rick about the idea, because we have no process in place if there's that sort of complaint, uh, other than just coming to the city council. Uh, of actually putting a, a light process in place so that people know, here's a form that you fill out if you've got a complaint, here's what the process is. And so both of those things right now, if anybody.
And chief, I believe the police department has a, a form like that, is that correct? If there's, if there were a citizen complaint against a police officer, you have a, a form or a process that is used?
We do. In fact, it's in the, in our little caddy thing right there by, by the door. If you have a complaint for a, a police officer, you fill it out and, and our. Our complaint process is it goes, it goes to the first line supervisor and then he determines if it needs, if, if there was a violation of a law. Or if it was just a general complaint, if it's a general complaint, it's issued to that officer supervisor to deal with accordingly. If it's a violation of law, then it goes to the lieutenant for an internal affairs investigation.
So the idea of doing a burden of that for civilian employees of the city makes sense, right?
Right, that, that's my recommendation that the council, um, direct us to come up with a. A, a formal process, you know, there's a, a complaint against a city employee. And how it's handled with there, there's a direct supervisor, et cetera, et cetera. We could use the, the police model as, as a guide. Bring, bring that forward. Um, I'm assuming Robbie, that could be just a, a, um. Policy adoption, is that correct? Does it require council vote?
For personnel policy standpoint, anything, I think this would be applied to the personnel policy. We do have some language in the personnel policy, it talks about. Interactions with, with each other and the community and that kind of thing, so, and we also have, um. In their disciplinary actions, again, for employees, could be oral reprimand, it could be written, and it could so for, so forth, we have those in place. But if we change, to answer your question, if we change the policy, you know, we have to revise it and we add that to it, and we can say the revision is. The month and year that we revised it and add that to it, so it's, it's.
But, but, but a personnel policy change does not necessarily require council vote.
It has in the past.
It has, okay.
Yeah.
I've seen it both ways, that's why, okay, then what we'll do, we'll, um, develop that. And, um, present it to council for your consideration and modification, adoption, whatever.
And with respect to the, to the issue that we've heard about. Monthly for about a year, I mean, you know, everybody has their right to come in and say whatever they wanna say. But there's not an issue there that, that in my mind means action. Uh, that, that's already been done and resolved and again, somebody has the right to be unhappy with that, but there's no. You good?
I'm fine. I'm good.
Do we, I mean, we're missing Richie who's brought it up repeatedly. Do we have anything from him on this?
No, I mean, I'll talk to him about it again, but I mean, this is one of those, you know. I mean, I, I can't help when somebody's not here, but.
Is anybody concerned with it here?
I, I looked at it, you know, the city council's had twelve opportunities to take action. Me and Scott are new. I mean, I've observed that set in the audience, but there's been twelve opportunities.
Right.
And yet we're still here. I'm not willing to take any action because it. I don't think that's been taken in the past. What do you think, Scott?
I, I'm not sufficiently, I've, I've received the letter that was submitted by a citizen. But I'm not, I wa- I was on the zoning board, so I didn't know what the situation was.
Right, so the.
And I don't know to what extent I need to be enlightened about it.
Right, I mean, I, I, I trust our leadership of the city and I trusted the decisions they made and I haven't been, that was before mine and Scott's day. So I feel like. There wasn't action before, we need to move on, that's what it feels like to me.
But I'm just. That's worrying too, I'm, I'm just. I mean, I don't wanna talk about it again. Again, the citizen has right to say whatever they want, whenever they want to, but, but. There's no there, there, here. No harm. Some of these feelings were, but you know, whatever.
Yeah, I think we had good discussion and made our decision.
Yeah, exactly.
And appreciate, you know. People do have, are able to. Talk about how they feel.
Anybody have any other issues that they wanna bring up before we close out the work session? I don't have anything else, so. Man, counsel.
Okay.
Camille, we'll talk about the, the dark sky thing properly next month after we have some more conversations with Graystone and all that. Anybody else on staff? If not, we'll see you back here at. I guess six thirty, right? Because that's what our current.
Six.
Greg, were you?
Six, six.
Oh, I'm sorry.
EMS, you want more here than what I can give later?
Uh, if you think it makes sense, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Here.
Actually, yeah. More opportunity for questions from council on that. Yeah, sorry, uh, that's a good idea, Greg.
I'm just looking for that opportunity to talk more.
Not at all. In its second year is a senate bill that is. Intended to, I won't say reform EMS, although it's loosely referred to as an E N A EMS reform bill. It modifies the relationship, the existing relationship that municipalities have.
I, I'm gonna back up for one second.
Okay.
Just because we do have a couple of new people here that haven't been involved in this conversation that we've had several times over the years. And, and just to, to frame the conversation, uh, we currently have our ambulance service provided by Grady. Uh, Grady at the initial, at the beginning of that process was a big improvement over the company that had been providing service for us previously. A M R response times dropped about half of them. But there's no real accountability built into the contract with Grady. The Grady contract covers all of Fulton County. And our service numbers have decreased, they have declined over the course of several years. Uh, that's been an ongoing issue that the fire chiefs has been working on, fire chiefs, uh, have that in their purview and so. All of that said, we've gone to the, to the legislature and that's what Greg's talking about now, where that stands with their legislature.
Right, so my foray into this started in twenty fourteen. It's ten years ago now that, uh, we've been trying to, um, affect better, um, EMS. Ambulance transport services here to the far end of our county. So. Um, what has occurred is the development of a bill by Senator John Albers. That generally speaking is that bill and content that all Fulton County Fire Chiefs find favor with. From the north to the south. And here's what it generally allows. It, under the current. Statutes. The Georgia Department of Human Services and their EMS Services Division. Hears. Complaints about the level of service that a municipality might be getting. And as was the case in twenty fourteen, when we sounded off about not getting good services. We, um, petitioned them to hear more and consider another service. And, and at that point in time, we were successful in dismissing that provider and inviting into the service relationship. Grady Healthcare. The reason it's like that is because the state law changed twenty or more years ago. To take the opportunity away from government, local government, to be able to define and, and manage these services. And put it into the hands of the state and the state said, we'll hear you, but you can really only recommend what. It is that you, you need, you're, you're needing or, or the services, the level of services you want, or maybe even a particular service provider. So, um. We're, this bill says that if I, oh, generally holds that if I. Municipality wants to withdraw from that state relationship, they don't have to. But you have the opportunity to withdraw and then develop the service on your own in the way you want. And, um. It is. Critical, because if you consider the relationship that the city, that the, uh, the state defines to the. To the provider. That award of the services for our region, we are region three. Um, it, it's a, it's just that, it's an award letter, it's not a contractual agreement that says you will perform at this level. And if you don't, there are these consequences. So all along the way, we've never had really any consequence to apply to them when they don't wanna, you know, answer to our concerns for. Ambulance is arriving at a, at a scene forty-five minutes or an hour. From the moment the nine-one-one call occurred. And I know that's unthinkable and, and yet in twenty fourteen, that's what was happening. Grady has done a yeoman's job to improve all of that. Uh, to the point that we're now at an average of sixteen to seventeen minutes. That's, that's, that's a huge improvement, but it's not what it needs to be to, to really save lives. That's where your fire department and our EMS skill sets come in to be quick there and stabilize until the transport can get it there. So if, if, if this bill were to be successful, the city of Chattahoochee Hills could decide to remove themselves from the region. And then perhaps develop a true legal contract for services and standards. With Grady and continue with Grady and all the resources that they, they have. And we might do that logically, it would be best if we did that with all of the cities of South Fulton. You see, because if one removes themselves, a little bit of the wind and the sails has gone out for Grady and. They might wanna diminish their service level or, or they might insist on a subsidy and, and, and any of that may still happen anyway. But better for us to, to, um, hold the wheel of and, and tend the wheel for the ship. Than to let the state, eh, eh, without this, uh, contractual agreement. So having said all that, I would tell you that again, all of the fire chiefs and the whole of the county agree with Senate Bill sixteen. And the reason I was late to the meeting is because I was on the phone, uh, with Ms. Fran Calhoun, who's senior legal counsel for Fulton County. And county's very interested in this, they want this to be able to happen. We've talked to, I've talked to, um, Senator Mandisha Thomas, talked to, um, I'm sorry, representative, then, uh, Senator Matt Brass. Um, Al, Senator Albers, a- a- as many people as we can, some of us. Fire type folk, EMS type folk, we're at the Capitol today. I'll be speaking to the Senate, um, hearing committee on this next week. Because it's, it's just, just, it seems like it's the right thing. It in fact. Returns us to where we once were and if we had, you know, prior to the law changing under Governor Barnes administration. If we had wanted to start an ambulance service prior to that. All we had to do is petition the state for a license and we could be doing that. Now we have no choice. And, uh, we have no one really riding shotgun on that relationship to the provider either. Again, Grady's done a great job. I wanna applaud them, because it's gotten a way of a lot better, but, um, anyway.
So Greg has been for several years, uh, leading this conversation with the South Fulton Chiefs. He, he was the, uh, the. The, what the chair, I guess, of the South Fulton Chiefs Association up until just a couple of months ago and continues to lead this conver. and continues to lead this conversation. Oftentimes, I've been the only mayor in the room for meetings like the meetings with Senator Albers. You know, it probably affects Chattahoochee Hills more than any other city because of our distance from the hospital. But so far, we've been able to keep all the towns together around us in this conversation. And try and elevate the standard and.
We were talking earlier, oddly enough, what they, the other cities around us in South Fulton seek to do is the very thing that we did in twenty eighteen to survive. And that was replace a medical response vehicle with a transport capable vehicle. And now they're all thinking, hey, what if we did that and we had to transport suddenly under certain circumstances or because Grady, you know, was, was needing us to do it, then if we had our own units like that, we could do that and Grady could, could hopefully reimburse us back for those expenses because we'd be doing it under their direction, under their license. Not now. If that were to come to pass. So I'm, I'm supportive of it. And I think you possibly could hear people talk about it. It, just this morning sent an email and, and had phone calls with some of the chiefs and so that it's now leading up to when this might come to the floor. The legislature or Sonny Die would be to, you know, try to drive as much attention to this as possible.
And a brief presentation at the South Fulton Municipal Association meeting around this.
Other mayors, other city managers, other chiefs there for that. Council members, I suppose.
Trying to keep everybody coordinated on it.
Thank you.
Spent some time today scenario gaming too, just, you know, what the cost might be under different possible outcomes to make sure that no matter what happens, we're ready for it. From a budgetary perspective. Again, nothing might change, but there's the possibility that things change and it's possible too, if this bill passes, that they could change relatively quickly. So, you know, more as the process continues, but we are trying to stay on top of this and, and trying to drive the conversation as much as we can.
The worst complaint would be that Grady should say.
Too many of you've pulled out to do your own thing and we're out of here. And now you're into a situation that state law and state EMS does provide for an emergency declaration and then everybody can go do their own thing. But I don't want to go there.
That's one thing we can't. Is to just do it on our own. But anyway, just, you know, kind of a heads up around the table. This is something that we've talked about in previous council meetings over the course of, you know, the whole time I've been involved here. Because it's an ongoing issue. This is kind of a state of play today. Thanks, Greg. Anything else? If not, we'll see you all at six thirty.
Was that?
There's a lot more discussion on that than I would.
Yeah, 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 yeah.